Thing one, thing two, and thing three, right? Good evening, welcome to Tuesday, May fourteenth, regular city council meeting. With that, Mike Urban, would you please call roll?
Sure, Mayor Benjamin.
Present.
Councilmember Delira.
Here.
Councilmember Fageron.
Here.
Councilmember Gaither.
Here.
Councilmember Guido.
Here.
Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Park asked to be excused tonight. Did I have a motion?
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. For community announcements, first of all, we still have some openings on the board commissions and committees, so applications are being considered for the following groups. Please apply on the city website, the Arts Commission, the Cemetery Committee, the Environmental Resilience Commission, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, and Parks and Rec Commission. The, do you have questions about the upcoming city outdoor irrigation schedule? It starts June first, you can water before 10:00 a.m. or after 6:00 p.m. Event addresses are Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, odd addresses are Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. Thank you for participating in helping our community better manage the aquifer. Your participation last year definitely made a noticeable difference. For more information, go to PullmanConserves.com. This weekend, we have the Three Forks River and Arts Festival, it's on Saturday, May eighteenth. The event is going to be held at the Riverwalk parking lot adjacent to Villa Family Chiropractic, with experience stations along the Riverwalk Trail. Experience stations extend from the depot to Sanctuary Yoga, including the library. The event is 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. with duck races at one, two, and three. Come on out, race a duck, and enjoy the downtown fun. And Arbor Day is coming up, Arbor Day is Friday, April twenty-sixth. The city of Pullman is getting into the spirit early tomorrow. I have the opportunity at two o'clock with the preschool class, they're going to help me get my hands dirty as we plant a tree on City Hall and Rec Center grounds. Those are... For Three Forks? Arbor Day? So we might be late in getting into it, so we're...
Oh, okay.
So, I guess we're late getting into it, not early getting into it. But we're, is how the timing worked out for us to be able to do our tree planting for Arbor Day. With that, we're on to community comments. This agenda item is an opportunity for the community to bring comments, concerns, or other non-agenda item-related items to the attention of the elected officials. Is there anyone that would like to provide a community comment? And so this will be for any non-agenda item, thanks. With that, Bobby?
Hi. Bobby Ryder, with Pullman Civic Trust. I just would like to, one, thank the council and everybody that worked toward getting the original paver design in the plaza and new pavers, and it looks like things are moving along really well with that, and I look forward to how that turns out in the end, maybe next week. But the other thing I wanted to bring up is, it would be lovely if we could see samples of the color of the bike lane and how they relate to the clay pavers and the concrete pavers, and it would just seem if we could have a concrete paver and a clay paver and a sample of the color of the bike lane, that would be really helpful, because regimental red, if you look on the website, it is stop sign red. It is really bright red, and it will not be as stable a color. It will fade to pink unless you do red and a brown mix, which would be more of a terracotta, which helps to stabilize that color. And so it would be really nice if we could see some way of, the bike lane is going to be a pretty significant element in that downtown design, and it would be lovely if it helped to unify the different kinds of pavers. So, that's my request.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to provide comments? If not, we'll close community comments then, and on to city council member comments, and I'll start down my end to right, so councilmember Gaithers, you have any comments?
No comments at this time.
Councilmember Delira?
No comment.
Councilmember, I'm getting, it's a long day, Weller?
Wow, it must be long, we've served a long time with each other, no comments, thank you.
Well, I want to call by first names is my problem. Councilmember Guido?
No comment.
Councilmember Wright?
No comment.
And councilmember Fageron?
No comment.
Okay. With that, I will, for mayor's comments, I appreciate everybody in the community that came out to the state of the city that I gave today at the Pullman Chamber Luncheon. It was good to see everybody's interest and be able, for me to be able to talk about all the good things that are going on in the community, and also to be able to really recognize and highlight the elected officials that I work with, and also the staff for each of your excellence and your dedication to our community, so thank you very much. With that, we are on to committee commissions and board reports, which we have none. On to city council and mayor future agenda requests, is there any council member that would, has a request for something for a future council meeting? Seeing none. Move on to community comments on final action items for this agenda. Persons may comment on any agenda item the city council takes final action on, including, this would be the consent agenda, the confirmation of appointments, and also the regular agenda. Is there anyone that would like to provide comments on any final action items? With that, move on to confirmation appointments. I have, brought to your council's attention, I'd like to appoint Glenn Johnson to the Cemetery Committee with the term expiring December thirty-first, 2025, and I would accept a motion at this time.
Move to approve appointment?
Second.
Is there any discussion? With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you very much, and as a reminder, we have other committee appointments that I hope you can help me get some applications in for. With that, we're now on to really what everybody's here for, and we have a great crowd, and so it's the Mayor Prize Post fifty-two, the American Legion Awards.
Mayor, councilmembers, because of the number of awards to be presented tonight, we have prepared information on the basis of the awards and the names of persons receiving the awards. Copies are available to anyone here tonight. The first one, the American Legion Citizenship Medal, awarded to a citizen who took actions that promoted human welfare and/or alleviated suffering and/or promoted positive social reform. Jared Piper Perez, Hannah Harder, and Karen Falk. Two of these people could not come here tonight, so will Hannah, please come forward to receive this medal. Congratulations. Humanitarian and life-saving awards, which are not restricted to public safety personnel, but may be given to any member of the community who has either have, has performed an act that results in the saving of a life, or who has performed an act that is considered humanitarian in nature. I will call the names in alphabetical order of officers presented with a certificate pertaining to this award. Officer Brian Chamberlain.
Officer Chamberlain has retired.
Okay, Officer Tiana Dillon. Sergeant Alex Gordon. Officer Jeff Gordon. Officer Ryan McNatty. Officer Darren Romero. Officer Abby St. Andre. Officer Daniel Tienggo. Officer Brooke Westerman, and he gets two awards. Nine eleven Operator of the Year. Criteria for this award is that the recipient be a full-time paid nine-one-one operator selected from a public or private agency that is responsible for receiving nine-one-one calls and dispatching fire, medical, or law enforcement services. The selected nominee may be either a call receiver or dispatcher. Dispatcher, call taker, area ponies, please come forward. Outstanding Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award, which is restricted to a member of a local, county, or state law enforcement agencies. Our post requires that the officer's actions must have occurred in or been involved on behalf of the city of Pullman. The Pullman Police Criteria for this award is that an officer's work during the past year has best exemplifies excellency in the law enforcement contributions to the police department and the community. Officer Ryan McNatty, please come forward. In addition to a certificate for this award, and his name is placed on a plaque of award recipients at the Pullman Police Department. This can... This concludes the award presentation tonight. We encourage any citizen or public safety office official to contact our American Legion Post at Post Office Box twenty-four in Pullman, nine-nine-one-six-three. Any American Legion member or the Pullman Police or Fire Department with nominations this year for 2024. And as a side thing, this may be my last year to award these awards, and it's truly been an honor to do so, thank you.
I do want to give my thanks for the American Legion and for the work that you do to recognize those that make such a difference in our community, and it's great to see not only the officers here, but the family and the kids, because I know for each of you, you don't do this alone, there's a lot of family support that goes into it, and you're doing it also for your family too. So, thank you to the officers, and for our dispatcher, and then also for the American Legion, thank you. At that, at this time, we'll take about a one-minute pause and let people clear out, you don't need to be here for the rest of the meeting if you don't choose to while we get ready for the next presentation. So our next agenda item is a report from the Housing Work Group. As a part of the city council, one of the things that you did ask for is annual reports from all of the committees, commissions, and also the work groups, and so councilmember Guido actually gets to lead off on the first one here with the Housing Work Group, and with that, councilmember Guido.
Great, well, thank you, and I want to thank Mayor Benjamin and the council for giving me time to talk about the work of what we're calling the Pullman Housing Work Group, which was established in 2022. Yeah, just locked it. Awesome, thank you. But before I do that, I want to start off with a rhetorical question. What do these people have in common? A single mom with two kids making somewhere in the mid forty thousand dollar a year range, and a two-person household making a combined income of fifty K annually. Well, they are first and foremost your friends, your family, and your neighbors. They could be the phlebotomist that works at Pullman Regional Hospital, they could be the daycare provider taking care of your child. The other thing they are is folks that wish that they could be homeowners. And they're also at or below the eighty percent AMI in the region in Whitman County, average median income, where the AMI is fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars a year, and qualifies for affordable housing. And just as a reminder, Washington State minimum wage is sixteen dollars and twenty-eight cents. So, with the median sold home price in Pullman at about four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars, and with an interest rate that we're looking at now at about six percent for mortgage rates, many people are priced out of this market. And I would argue that further erodes our middle class and makes a negative impact on our, or negative economic impact, or a lost opportunity, let's put it that way. So, a little bit of history about our work group. Back in 2022, when I started on the council, I did express a desire to look at housing, how it impacts Pullman, and the city council came up with a goal to promote and support community efforts to provide more attainable and affordable housing. And at that time, Mayor Johnson said, when I expressed an interest in working on this, he said, "Go forth and create an exploratory committee," which we did back in 2022, and I will talk more about how that has evolved into the Housing Work Group. In 2023, the council was presented with an Housing Action Plan by Community Development from a grant received by the Department of Commerce, and what that did was establish a need, and showed, according to their research, that ten thousand new unit, housing units are required to meet a 2040 housing demand, with the projection being for an additional seven thousand ninety-nine residents over the course of twenty years. That was from the Housing Action Plan. So you can see our housing needs are great over the next twenty years, we have a lot of work to do. The other thing that the work group has really kept an eye on and wanted to focus on is something called missing middle housing, you may have read about this or heard about the term in the news over the last few years, and it's defined many ways, but according to missingmiddlehousing.com, it provides a diverse housing options, for example duplexes, fourplexes, cottage courts, courtyard buildings, and often they are configured so that there's retail and public transportation very close to these types of houses. And they also sit in the middle of a spectrum between detached, single-family homes, which is what we're very used to, and mid-rise to high-rise apartment buildings typically seen in a city in terms of form and scale. The other thing we, as a group, really try and keep first and foremost as a tenant is affordable housing is, does not mean cheap. It means different from what we're used to seeing and building, and we'd like to reduce the stigma that's often associated with affordable housing, because, let's face it, everybody wants to be able to afford their home, right? So... The members of this housing, Pullman Housing Work Group, myself and RJ Lot, the Director of Community Development as my co-chair, Mike Burney, Director of Pluse River Counseling, Jeff Gaiet, Director of Community Action Center, Chris Finch with RE/MAX Home and Land, Tom Handy, Whitman County Commissioner, Helene Hopkins, owner of Helene's Property Place in Pullman, Jennifer Wallace, Director of Pluse Habitat for Humanity, Elizabeth Perez, the Deputy Director of Washington Home Ownership Resource Center, based right here in Pullman, and Nils Peterson, the Executive Director of Moscow Housing Trust. I want to personally thank these folks for starting off with this group when we were busy storming and forming, and still with me two years later, after we've had some time to really dig in and accomplish some things, all volunteer-based. So the mission of our work group is to create an economically healthy and inclusive community by fostering access to additional affordable homeownership opportunities for Pullman residents. And you will note that, very specific in our mission, is additional affordable homeownership opportunities, and we've narrowed that scope and that focus on purpose with the idea that, not to ignore the rental market, realizing that's a part of the overall housing picture, but rather to hone in on one type of housing opportunity, particularly around homeownership, so that we could make a real impact on one area for our Pullman residents going forward. So the scope of our group is affordable and attainable housing development, as I said, we want to identify those opportunities, identify funding sources, secure that funding, and facilitate the development of affordable and homeownership. Another way that we've talked about affordable housing is no more than thirty percent of someone's household income, including utilities, or fifty to eighty percent of that AMI. We want to review our policies and develop new ones where it makes sense, review existing housing codes and regulations to ensure the goal of creating affordable and attainable homeownership. We want to develop the policy recommendations with the help of community development to facilitate the provisions of affordable and attainable homeownership for the Pullman City Council to consider. Of course, we want to do this in collaboration and in partnership with government agencies, nonprofits, organizations, developers, builders, and other stakeholders to leverage the resource and expertise, and hopefully come up with some innovative approaches to addressing housing challenges. Reaching out to our community, engaging with our stakeholders, including residents, community organizations, and local businesses to gather input, raise awareness, as well as do data analysis, analysis and research with the help of, again, the Community Development Department leaning on them quite a bit, but other entities that do research around housing on market trends, demographics, different needs, to really inform our decision-making. Finally, maintenance and sustainability and resilience. We want to integrate standards of safe and well-maintained housing, integrate principles of sustainability and resilience into housing development and existing housing inventory, planning efforts to promote energy efficiency, environmental conservation, and resilience to natural disasters and climate change. We want to evaluate and monitor our work and the effectiveness of these housing programs and initiatives, monitor the outcomes, measure the outcomes, and make adjustments as needed. So that's the scope of our work group, as it has evolved and as we've done the good work of really defining what our mission and scope is. So what have we done in the last two years? In October of 2023, the city council voted to change city code defining accessory living quarters, and allows, the code right now that was changed now allows for non-family members to rent an accessory building, also known as a mother-in-law unit, or an ADU, accessory dwelling unit, or a granny flat, a carriage house, lots of different names for this, but, and you notice that we did talk about rent there. We kind of started off with the, the work group looked at what are some low-hanging fruit, and ADUs was one of the areas that was identified as basically being able to provide more accessibility and attainability of housing, and so that's why we started off with that, and we essentially made that recommendation, brought forward that idea to the planning committee, they vetted it and brought forward a recommendation to the city council, and the city council voted to change that to non-family members being able to occupy the accessory buildings. The other thing we're doing actively right now is kind of shopping around a concept in Pullman, and we've been doing this for the last three to four months. Nils Peterson with the Moscow Land Trust, who is the Director of that, has been visiting and speaking at a number of civic groups to talk about this community land trust model, which has been successful in Moscow, and the idea of possibly partnering with Moscow Land Trust to expand that model into Pullman. So far, we've gotten very positive feedback. So far, we've gotten very positive feedback around the model, which essentially is that the community land trust owns the land and the house. They sell the house to someone who wants to purchase it. And the value or the price of that house is lower because it doesn't count the, the land. And then that person can then live in it, build equity. They can even turn around and sell it if they want to, but they need to sell it at, the, the price that they can sell it at is capped, essentially to keep it affordable. So we're looking at that, excited by that idea of possibly getting that off the ground with the help of the Moscow Land Trust. The other thing I'm really excited about, and will take a big group effort, is hosting the Community Housing Resource Fair. Our Housing Work Group is going to sponsor this on Saturday, September 14th, at the Gladish in Pullman. Everyone is welcome, but it's really geared toward those who desire, oops, those who desire to be homeowners, those who want to stay in their homes and maintain them, those, and those that are seeking education on how to become a homeowner. We are in a really fortunate situation to already have this long list of vendors that have something to do with homeownership education or a component of homeownership onboard, committed to being there, the Washington State Housing Finance Commission, Washington Home Ownership Resource Center Homesite, which is an innovative mortgage company that actually started over on the west side, but they're eager to break into the east side of the state, county, and city officials, Plouse Habitat for Humanity, Moscow Housing Trust, the Whitman County Realtors, Spokane Neighborhood Action Partners, also known as SNAP. And they're the ones that provide free homebuyer classes, Department of Financial Institutions, and Parkview Services. So we really encourage people to come who are interested in learning how to be a homeowner on the 14th of September, and more to come on that. And finally, looking forward, our group is excited to let you know that, thanks to our grant writer that we recently hired at the city, she was able to secure what is called the Missing Middle Housing Grant by the Department of Commerce. And that grant will basically provide an assessment of our missing middle housing here in Pullman. And we expect to be able to provide the results to city council in 2025. That will provide a great baseline for us as far as what we're looking at and how we can improve from there, as well as giving, give us some data for funding, essentially, going forward. So that's a lot, and I moved fast. Any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Weller?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Guido. This is a huge undertaking. And as we see, I mean, across the nation, there's these issues. My question relates, when I was first on looking at housing prices and everything like that, response that I received continually was, our market, you know, it's determined, it's market-based. So that's just where it is, and that's how it's going to stay. Has your group looked at responses to that? Because when I look around and considering we have a real glut of rentals and single-family homes or, you know, dwellings that, that have turned into rentals, I feel that's also added to the increase in price. And now with, with less students going to WSU, some of my thoughts are those rental companies are losing out a great deal of money. And is there a way for us to reclassify or talking to the rental agencies and say, "Why don't we create, you know, low-threshold housing opportunities?" So how do you respond to? I, I threw a lot out there because, as you were talking, I was, the gears were kind of grinding. But this market, you know, of course, things are determined by the market. But how do you respond when people say, "Well, that's, that's just how it's going to be"?
Yeah. I get that, that there are some determinants out there, like land and labor and materials. That's typically what people respond. But I will note that we have a member on the work group who is a property manager. And she is telling us that she's seen, like, 15% to 20% rental vacancies right now. And, you know, that is going to impact, bring down the cost of rentals, matter of supply and demand. And I think we also have to get creative as far as our existing inventory, because the tendency is to want to build. And, I mean, we just heard from Mayor Benjamin today at his State of the City address that we only had 45 permits pulled for construction last year. That's not going to get us to where we need to be in 20 years at that rate. So we need to look at our existing housing inventory and that stock and see what we can do in terms of, you know, like that idea of the land trust, that if someone isn't renting their, their house or their home, then would they consider possibly making it part of a, what they call a scattered house model under the land trust? You know, it's better than it's sitting there vacant and not receiving any income. So we have to start thinking that way and looking at the codes that would help facilitate that.
Other comments or questions? If not, thank you very much, Councilmember Guido.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda. This time, I entertain a motion to read the Consent Agenda by title only.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With that, Mike Urban, if you could please read the Consent Agenda?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Your Consent Agenda tonight is item number one, a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of April 16th, 2024, and approve them as submitted. Item two, a motion to dispense with the reading of the regular meeting minutes of April 13th, 2024, and approve them as submitted. Item three, a motion to dispense with the reading of the special meeting minutes of April 27th, 2024, and approve them as submitted. Item four, a motion to accept funding from the Sherrod Family Memorial Fund for $22,427 for 2024 janitorial services for the Neil Public Library's Heritage Edition. Item number five, a motion to authorize in your local agreement for fire protection and EMS services between Washington State University and the city of Pullman for the period of January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2026. Item six, a motion to ratify a revision to the local agency agreement for the citywide intersection improvement project. Item number seven, a motion to ratify a revision to the local agency agreement for the citywide pedestrian crossing improvements project. Item number eight, a motion to authorize execution of a Cisco Enterprise Agreement through Compinet on state contract. Item nine, ratify change order number two to the Pullman Downtown Improvements Contract. Item 10, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks number 2011168 through 2011247 totaling $5,64,525.77. Item number 11, a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks, electronic transfers, and ADP payroll transfers totaling $1,093,526.46. Item number 12, Resolution Number R-28-24, a resolution accepting a public waterline easement granted by Pullman Progress One LLC, authorizing the execution of said agreement and providing for other matters properly related thereto. And item number 13, Resolution R-29-24, a resolution accepting bid of Sean Cole Construction, Inc. for Rainy Pool Complex Lap Pool Liner Installation and authorization, execution, and delivery of the contract for said project.
Are there any items that a council member prefer to have taken out and considered separately? If not, with that, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda items?
Move to approve Consent Agenda.
Second.
With that, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And next, on to the regular agenda. First up, and once again, we have Mike, Mike Urban?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I apologize for not being at the podium tonight. I've got a couple extra duties, so I'm going to report from here. But for your consideration tonight on the regular agenda is International Association of Firefighters Local 1892 Labor Contract for 2024 through 2026. The previous contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local 1892 had expired December 31st of 2023. After thorough discussions on this document, the bargaining unit and their members voted on April 19th, 2024 to approve this. So now it's before you for your consideration as well. Highlights to this contract include 2024 wage increase of 6% retroactive to January 1st, 2025 wage increase of 2.5% floor and up to 4.5% ceiling based on CPIW for August versus August. And in 2026, that same piece. And that is commensurate with our other city union contracts. An increase in premium pay for paramedics from 9.5% to 11%. And then a provision now for longevity pay, very similar to what the police department has adopted as well in their previous contract. Staff wishes to thank the International Association of Firefighters Local 1892 for their hard work in arriving at this agreement. And staff recommends that the city council, by motion, ratify the labor contract as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
With that, any questions? If not, I entertain a motion for approving the labor contract?
Move to approve contract as presented.
Second.
With that, Mike, could you read? It's already been read.
Yeah. A motion to approve International Association of Firefighters Local 1892 Labor Contract for 2024, 2026.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to item number two. Once again, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Council. Before you, for your consideration is ordinance number 24-07 amending the, the budget that was passed for the 2023-2024 biennium. So typically, when labor contract comes in front of us for approval, we like to come with the associated budget amendment at that same time as well. It helps our departments better track their expenditures as the pieces go on. So with the item you just approved for the firefighter's contract before you tonight is this budget amendment. So RCW does establish that the city council can find it in the best interest of the city to amend the previous biennial budget to reallocate expenditure items that cannot be reasonably foreseen at the time the original budget was adopted back in November of 2022. And certainly with the contract closing this April and you taking action on it moments ago, that would certainly qualify for that. So if you look at the ordinance in Exhibit A that's attached to it, you can see the different funds that are affected by the proposed budget amendment for $368,128. And really, it just comes down to salaries, overtime, and benefits, because that's what was affected by the contract. So staff recommends the city council approve ordinance 24-07 as presented. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that as well.
With that, any questions? If not, I entertain a motion for approval?
Move to adopt ordinance number 24-07.
Second.
With that, any, any discussion? Mike, if you could read the ordinance?
Absolutely. Ordinance number 24-07, an ordinance amending ordinance number 22-25 adopted November 29th, 2022, and entitled an ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Pullman for the biennium 2023 to 2024, relating to the 2024 to 2026 IAFF Local 1892 Union Collective Bargaining Agreement.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now, breaking away from Mike's one-man show, item number three, Clayton Forsman?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Back in February of 2021, staff hired a consultant to complete a conceptual design for improvements to Airport Road from Terrivee Drive to the east end of, of the runway near Orville Boyd Road. That conceptual design work was completed in April of 2022. The concept includes widening the road to provide a continuous center-turn refuge lane through most of the corridor, adding curb and gutter, adding a 12-foot-wide shared asphalt use path on the south side of the road, a 7-foot-wide sidewalk on the north side, storm drainage infrastructure improvements, illumination, and a roundabout at the Terrivee Drive intersection. In addition, right-of-way will need to be purchased in some key areas in order to accommodate the wider roadway section. Staff used that conceptual design to successfully apply for and receive a federal RACE grant to fund the final design permitting work for the improvements to Airport Road. In order to select a consultant for the final design and permitting work, staff solicited a statement of qualifications from qualified firms. Three proposals were received and evaluated by staff. That was followed by telephone interviews of each of the three firms. And at the end of that, Parametrics Incorporated was selected as the most qualified consulting firm for this project. The full scope of work is included in your council packet. And the final deliverable will be a shovel-ready set of plans and specifications for the project. One unique aspect of this project will be the coordination that's necessary with FAA for the improvements to the roadway and potential land acquisition. All work will be performed on a cost-reimbursable basis with a not-to-exceed amount of $1,019,976, which will be fully funded by the RACE grant with no local match required. Following this work, staff will then begin the process of seeking additional funds to acquire the needed right-of-way and to construct the project. It is staff's recommendation that council adopt the attached resolution approving a professional services consultant agreement with Parametrics Incorporated for the Airport Road Design Project. Any questions?
With that, any questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution?
Move to approve Resolution Number R-30-24.
Second.
Great. With that, any discussion? Seeing none with that. Mike, if you could read the resolution, please?
Yes. Resolution Number R-30-24, a resolution authorizing the execution of a local agency A and E professional services cost-plus-fixed fee consultant agreement between the city of Pullman and Parametrics Incorporated for the Airport Road multimodal and regional access improvements project.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. With that, we've completed all of the agenda before us. And... Is there any new business to come before us? I don't believe there is. And so with that, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. 7:48, good job, Council.